This is not the appropriate place. Put it somewhere else. We have so much already. Let's find another area in town that can accept this type of setup. That's my take on it. But let's look for other areas.
Thank you, Alderman Winger. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Ross, could you give me an area in Wooddale that dead center in a residential area for a tower? Do we have one?
City of Wooddale on site.
Yeah, or anywhere where there's a tower that dead center in residential area.
We have our water tank on Irving Park Road. We have-
Besides that.
We have on some of the taller condominium buildings, there are antenna towers up on those already. Private carriers have installed antenna towers on the condominium towers in the middle of the residential districts.
Let me rephrase the question.
Mm-hmm.
For a private company in a residential area, tell me someplace in Wooddale that we have a tower.
A free-standing town.
Besides what are towers and city-owned property.
No, don't have one.
Could you give me a town that would have a tower in the middle of a residential area? I've never seen it. So, I mean, if we want to ruin Wooddale and put up a tower in a residential area, go ahead and do it. But in my area, I think it's an eyesore. And versus a high-rise building, yeah, you got, how many floors are on that building? Fifteen stories over there? No one sees it in there. It's not, airplanes will see it, fine, but not in a residential area. It ruins the city. ComEd's been there before, so.
Alderman Coles, you're seeking recognition.
I wasn't hearing much about this thing, but as far as I was concerned, that's over in the area where the power lines are, the pump systems are, the, so it's in sort of an industrial area. I realize that somebody has planted flowers by the bike path and everything else. I don't want to mention her name, but she's worried, she's worried about that. As far as I'm concerned, they could put the tower up as long as they have the insurance and as long as they can, they can afford to pay the bill to us every month or every year. As far as I'm concerned, they could put the tower up. It wouldn't interfere with me at all. He could put it in my backyard if he wanted to, as long as it doesn't matter. There you go. See that? There you go. See, so I, I wouldn't care, but I realize that's in somebody else's ward and maybe some of yous don't like it, but it could come in a first ward if there was room to put it. We built a big retention pond on Third Avenue for water and it don't look good whenever it rains when it's full of water, but we still live with it. So, let's live with it.
Well, I, I respect what you're saying, Alderman Coles, and one, one train of my thought is that this is nice little revenue stream over a period of 20 years or whatever, but then at the same time, I think I wouldn't want to live next to it. I wouldn't want to explain to the people that have to live next to it, you know, why I approved it. And I also, I'm also pretty sure that if a private property owner came in here looking for the same variance, that we would very likely deny it. So, for all the reasons we're discussing here tonight, so I, I'm against it, too. If there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion in the affirmative so that goes on record as a motion to approve, and I'll look for a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
This is to approve it?
This is to approve it.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Cadella?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Shawkey?
No.
Motion fails. It's not approved. Items to be considered at future meetings, replacement, oops, sorry, wrong page, develop more requests for revision to approved subdivision plans, Ethan Wood subdivision, lot coverage, that should be February according to staff, lot coverage in March according to staff, streetscape sign project later this month, the brick ordinance review, a review of commercial signage and advertising as per the mayor's question to staff, and at some point in the near future, I would like a very brief update of the welcome packet situation. Is there anything anybody else wants to add? Alderman Shawkey.
I noticed in the Illinois Municipal League Magazine this month, they had an article about billboards. We don't have any billboards in town, but I'm just wondering, in our zoning code, do we have anything stopping billboards from going up wherever they would like?
Would you like some billboards in town?
No.
Okay. No, I don't believe they're allowed.
You what?
I don't believe they're allowed.
So, maybe it's something to consider for the future, to eliminate the possibility of billboards along Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road, whatever.
Does the mayor have a comment on this?
Well, just a correction, we do have one in town approved by special use. It's on the Thorndale corridor.
Correct.
Thorndale and Wooddale Road, just a little bit to the east. There is one that's existing today.
Well, let's put it on a future agenda item to discuss it and ensure that they're eliminated elsewhere and only available as special use. Mr. Forrest seems to believe they are, but let's absolutely confirm that. Okay. Anything else? If not, motion to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Murmies.
The update on the welcome packet is forthcoming later this month.
Okay.
Wasn't planning on bringing it back to committee, but given an extensive report in your packets.
Okay. That's acceptable to me. Alderman Lewitin?
I have a question to Mr. Roy Wesley. How much time has elapsed since you made your motion to switch to another section that Mr. Stevens was involved in? How many minutes have elapsed?
Probably 10 minutes.
Okay. Let's put it on record that that's about $15 worth of payroll for not doing anything. And I think Mr. Wesley's opinion that all matters pertaining to experts, that we are paying hourly wages to be here, should be combined, boom, 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 and then let the person go home.
Absolutely. And another $3.67 to Mr. Stefan for that statement. Thank you.
Keep in mind, when we're talking about Mr. Stefan, he's a little bit different from our normal consultants, because after the meeting, we typically have engineering questions that are going to come up in reference to projects we will talk about later tonight. So, he is needed after the meeting. So, in all likelihood, he's going to be here the whole night, each and every night we have a council meeting. So, really, when we start, what committee he's specifically dealing with is probably not relevant.
Motion to approve. Some move. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Are you okay with getting through half the financing? Can we? Okay, okay. Okay, I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting of January 13, 2011. Will the minute taker please reflect? Same members are present. And before I do the minutes, I do want to mention that, Mr. Manager, I believe that you did lay everything out perfectly as far as lineup goes. I really do, because in this case, we're going to have Mr. Stefan for several hours, and why not pay a little respect to a department head that if we can get a department head out of here in a half hour, then I think we should do that. That there is still some degree of consideration we should give for the individual and not necessarily hourly versus salary. But it, it's a fine line, but in this case, I think it was done, done well. I make a motion to approve minutes dated December 9, 2010. Is there a second?
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation, property buyout, and we do have a write-up in front of us in our packets, and I, I mean, I do believe it's a good program. We should look at it and start setting aside money as, as it's described systematically each year. And yes, a policy should be in place, though, in conjunction. And I know that we started out on a priority listing of who would be, of what areas would be bought up first, so I would really want that in place before the program actually starts, so we all agree on how it's done, as well as, do we only use monies if there's a match of some type from the county or from the state, something like, so there's more of a clear, defined process of when it happens. So, with that, Mr. Wilson, would you wish to interject anything else before I start calling on people?
No, I think, I think you, you hit it pretty square in the head. I mean, the first question amongst the nine of you is, do you even want to be in the business of buying out properties? And if the answer to that is yes, then where should the money come from? And you need to have a solid plan in place, so it's not, you know, willy-nilly freewheeling. You have a definitive progression of how and why and when you buy something out. But like I said, the first question is, do you want to be in the business of buying out property? If the answer is yes, then you could go through and try and establish a funding source and rules for the program.
Okay. I, I, I might guess. Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
My suggestion is that we put this on hold right now until we go through the budget process and we go through the capital projects, and put this on hold the time being, because we still don't know, we are already facing six months behind with the state funding. Okay? And even though it's to stay past that tax increase now, we still don't know if we're going to get our money. So, my suggestion, I'm for this project, no doubt about. I think we need to get through capital projects first and the budget first, and then revisit this after where we get the money source to do this project. I'm not against this project, but we got priorities right now. We got the CIP, we got the budget. I think this could wait right now until we see how much money we actually have left to fund this project. That's my suggestion.
At the same time, we are stewards of the community and of the future. Alderman Cadella.
I respect what Alderman Wesley is saying, but I think one of our biggest problems right now is the, is blight and, and problems that we're seeing from homes that have been abandoned for going on three years now from this, this last big flood. At the very least tonight, I want to walk out of this meeting with a consensus that either, yes, we want to do this, whether or not we're going to be able to find the revenue stream, yes, we want to do this, and, and to be, at least be able to go to those, to those budget meetings with this as, as an important item to, to be included, even if it's a small amount of money a year, but to at least begin to make some commitment. And as you say, Alderman Winger, you know, to, to really show that we are stewards of the community and are doing what we can with what is available to us to, 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 to keep from having the blight situations that we are starting to see now.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll just point out, we have been in the buyout program ever since the flood of 1972. Since then, we've probably purchased 20 to 30 different homes using various programs, combining with DuPage County, combining with the feds, combining with FEMA, but there's property all up and down the creek where there used to be homes that doesn't exist anymore. And I think it is important we get the policy in place, because right now, we have that grant pending for the $6 million on the Illinois Department of Economic Opportunity grant for the 2008 federal flood money before that expires. So, it'd be nice to have the policy in place should that money come forward.
Okay, that's a very good argument for it. Let's see, Alderman Lewitin?
Well, I was going to rejoin what Mr. Brad Wilson said. He said, and I'll repeat what he said, he says, "Do you want to be in the business of, of property buyouts?" And I would like to say that that's an inappropriate phrasing of a question, because as Alderman Winger just pointed out to you, we're in the business of being stewards. And as the mayor just pointed out, we're in the business of controlling flood. Buyouts are a means to an end. It's not a business. It's a process of reaching an end. And with that, I'd like to say, I, I think that I really think, you've now heard it really from three Aldermen. I'd like that opinion to be changed from a business to a procedure of what our real business is, of being stewards.
Alderman Police.
As far as buying out homes, if it's going to help the area with flooding, we've got, what do we do? Three studies last year? We passed the studies, the people came up, everybody was feeling great, studies came, we denied everything. That's useless. We're not going to just keep doing studies like this macro study that's in the CIP. We need to do something, put some type of money aside, so when we got to take care of some flooding issues, we actually take care of the flooding issues. I'm reading the books, just a small amount of people are affected, or it only takes care of a few, few residents. So, we put in a sidewalk, there's only a few people affected with the sidewalks, so why are we doing the sidewalk? We need to address flooding issues as they come up somewhat.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, when you sit there and say policy, you're not talking about funding it as a dollar amount, are you?
We were proposing a three-pronged policy. Number one, to identify the, the most severe affected in the flood of 2008. There are 81 homes that were affected in the flood of 2008. The first, if we get the $6 million to be to buy out those that cannot be flood-proofed. The second strategy was to raise homes that can be flood-proofed or low entry points eliminated to provide cash assistance for that. And the third strategy was to develop it as an aesthetic area, so it would be a permanent benefit for the city of Wooddale. So, that's the way we prepared and filled out the grant application.
Okay. I would, I would agree on, on doing a policy, but at this time, I wouldn't agree on, on putting any dollar amount to it in any which way, since, since we don't know where the state's going, thanks to PacQuinn. We still don't know if we're going to get our money, but if, if we do have extra money, then we, we should use it for that. But just a policy, I would go, go along with right now. This way, we're making a first step, at least.
Like to reaffirm the policy?
Right.
And find, and then try and find the money, is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, if the money comes from the state, we've got extra money, but who knows what they do down there?
Alderman Cadella.
I, I agree. At least having this policy, at least having this discussion now is going to go a long way. I had a meeting and a, and a field trip with Kitty Weiner from Peter Roskam's office and, and Jeff Murmies and John Forrest, and she's aware of, you know, she's had familiarity with our area, but it wasn't until she saw, and we pointed out the empty homes and how bad they look, and, you know, window missing over a garage and weeds growing over the front windows, that she realized what a, what a difficult situation we've been left with since the flood of '08. A discussion that we had in brief was, you know what? We keep asking the county to do engineering things to resolve the problem, but maybe the easiest and fastest way out is to begin to buy up with whatever money, county, state, city, federal grant money, begin to buy the houses that have the, the worst problems. So, us having a policy in place reinforces the, the need and that we're out there asking our elected officials for. So, I agree. I think it's got to come tonight, and if nothing else, at least the agreement that we should have that.
I was starting to lean in that direction as well, but then I revisited the write-up from Mr. Wilson, and, and I do believe we do have to find the funding source first before we continue to talk ad nauseam about policy, and, and I'm sure it'll be a lengthy debate, and the citizens will see us talking about buyouts, and they're going to, it's going to appear as if it's in place, and it'll be a big disappointment if there's no money or a funding source to, to start. So, I would like to see us look at, are we committed to this? Where is the funding source? I know there was a recommendation in, in the write-up. Potentially, it is $115,000 from the utility tax, or, or whatever the case may be. And I want to recognize Mr. Wilson, then Alderman Shawkey. Ms. Wilson?
Couple of quick points. Yeah, the, the numbers that I put in the, in the memo were just examples of what you, what you could do.
Right.
They weren't, you know, commitments or recommendations per se, just examples, as, you know, it could be a percentage of a certain revenue stream or a fixed amount from a revenue stream, and that's up to, up to the nine of you. And kind of to your point about the residents hearing about it and things of that nature, kind of going back to the side of the dais is, you know, having the money is great, but if you don't have a policy, you almost need the policy first to avoid the, well, why do you buy mine and not mine? And to, to get out of, hmm, it'd just be cleaner if there was a set policy to lean back on. Instead of having a pot of money with no policy, it's kind of like the whole liquor license thing. If you have an open liquor license, they can come say, "I want that."
Mm-hmm.
But if you don't have one, they have to come to you and say, "Can I have one?"
Mm-hmm.
So, if you have a policy, they can say, "Do I qualify under X, Y, or Z?", and then you can go look to see if they qualify to buy the property. Where if you have a pot of money with no policy, it could be, it could become the Wild West pretty quick.
Okay.
So, it was, kind of do the policy before the, the funding.
Okay. Alderman Shawkey?
I agree with Alderman Lewitin that we do need a policy in place. We ran into that with the condemnation. Well, how does that differ from the condemnation, really? And, but we did run into that in trying to acquire property into Wooddale, to annex property into Wooddale. We didn't have a policy, so we were lost in the process. We need a policy, because I don't want some council to say, "Well, I'm, we're going to buy Dan Shawkey's house, and so we can get him out of town and stop him from being an Alderman." I mean, that's an extreme, but we have to have something in place, so we know what we're doing. Where the, where the money is going to come from, I feel, we can look for that after we have the policy in place, as to how we will handle it. I understand that we have, the Forest Reserve has some money that's perhaps looking to buy out some homes right now in Wooddale. Do we have a say in what, what they do? I'd like to make sure we do have a say, and that means having a policy in place.
Okay, what I'm going to do is I'll recognize Mr. Manager, then I, I'm going to say a few words, call on Alderman Coles, and then I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I was going to echo Chairman Winger. I would suggest that we just build a consensus tonight on if we want the policy. We're not prepared tonight to discuss parameters of the policy. I think we need some more information for, for the council, so I would just recommend that we do that. Come back, you just get a consensus that we want a policy, we'll come back with policy ideas, and then we'll come back with funding suggestions. That would be my recommendation.
And you answered my question. Where do we go from here? Alderman Coles?
What I would suggest is, we, we get the policy, and then we put a line, we get a line number, and then we can go from there. You have to put a line in the finance department in order to put the money in, and then also figure out where it's going to come from. So, that's, that's two things that you have to do.
You want to call in Alderman Roy Wesley? I think you had something to say.
Yeah. Brad, you gave a suggestion about pulling from the utility tax here in the memo.
That's just a, that's just a suggested example. I don't recommend we actually talk about funding sources tonight. That was just an example.
Okay. Do you actually need a motion, or just guidance on, "We want a policy"? I believe there is a majority that want a policy.
I'd like, I'd like some direction on if a consensus is that we have a majority that we want a policy. We'll bring policy parameters back at the next committee meeting, and then we can talk about funding after the policy.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion to recommend discussion on a policy, or just-
I don't think, I just think we need consensus, and we'll bring it back to the next committee if a majority want to have a policy.
Okay, does anyone here not want to have a policy? No, so everyone agrees? I think we're good.
Just have one question.
Alderman Police.
With all the money that's out there with FEMA, if they come, come to us, do we have a plan on what needs to be bought out or whatnot?
We don't have to formulate a plan ahead of time. As the mayor mentioned, we had that rough action plan. We have documentation from previous floods about worst to first, which properties-
So, we have some.
Have the worst amount of flooding.
Okay.
And they're ranked already, so it's, I don't think it's that much of an issue. Mayor, do you, do you agree with that?
No, I would agree. We pretty much know which ones are the worst. Just for information, the existing county policy is Creekside first. If it's not Creekside, is it adjacent to another property they've already owned? And then the third criteria, the least, would be a standalone property. So, that's their policy.
Okay. Okay, then, with that, that concludes item number four. And next item is report and recommendation on the fiscal year 2012 capital improvement plan. And Mr. Wilson, would you like to start us out here? Or how do you recommend we go through this? Do you have a preferred, or suggestion on it? Yes?
Well, I would respectfully ask Minute Taker Schultz. It's an hour and a half in, and this might take an hour and a half or two hours, so if she's-
Okay. Yeah. Okay, let's take a break. I make a adjournment, or recess.
Recession.
Okay. And the same members are present, as in a roll call. So, with that, I will hand it, hand it off to the finance and finance team to take us through the overview.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Going through the draft this year's CIP briefly, the, Mr. Will? Better. Thank you, control room. So, the, the format is very similar to the format we've had the last couple of years. Letter of Transmittal we have here at the front, very similar to the last couple of years. The only real thing of note that's different in the Transmittal letter is on page four. Scroll down, go down a little bit right there, is the section speaking about the water and sewer capital projects, which we will get to, but the proposed projects and figures for those projects in the draft version do show the water and sewer capital projects facing a $2.4 million deficit for this current year. In that regards, there's two options, really. One, you can take money out of the water and sewer fund cash reserves, which currently are around $8 million, or you can push the projects off. However, that's going to delay the projects, obviously, lead to higher costs, and in some cases, depending on how severe the project is, things could break or give way before you actually get to them, which could lead to an emergency situation, which, again, would have you paying more. Page five goes through and lists out the unfunded projects, which are in the back. There are two new unfunded projects this year. The Edgewood Avenue sidewalk, which is unfunded primarily because the survey itself for the not the residents want the sidewalks on Edgewood, is in there. And also, it needs to be a little bit of discussion as, on if something is proposed and there's a survey sent out for it, and it's approved, does it automatically get slotted in the next fiscal year, or does it get slotted where, wherever it fits in? So, that is a, a policy that we're going to need to touch on. And the other large one is the Irving Park Road Water Main replacement, which is, which based upon engineers' estimates, around $6.3, $6.4 million. So, those are the two new big ones. The other ones are carryovers from last year. A couple moved out of the unfunded and back into the body of it, primarily the men's locker room for the police department, and some money to redo concrete floors over at the Public Works Facility, 720 North Central. With that, we go onto page eight. It's a very high-level summary of each of the main, four main categories, and what the proposed expenditures for those are, and then the total for them. You'll see 2015, the just under $40 million number there. That is the treatment plant. Again, we still maintained worst-case scenario, expansion, all the upgrades, bells and whistles. I have heard that that number may be lower than 36 million, but for now, since it's a dollar-for-dollar offset in the cash flow with bonds, loans, and other funding sources, just assume it in there.
Mr. Wilson, I think we have a question. Alderman Lewitin?
I'd like to go back to page four.
Is this okay with you ask questions as we go, or do you want to get through the whole thing and then- Or do you want to get through the whole thing and then?
I'm fine with it if you're fine with it.
The city has two primary options in dealing with this deficit. One, take money out of the water sewer fund cash reserve. That money comes from the money that people pay in their water bill. Correct?
Correct.
And we decided when we made that a fund for the future purchase of water and water treatment plant, that that was gonna be sacrosanct, that we were not going to touch it for any other purpose. That is an enterprise fund. We specifically called it an enterprise fund. We voted to make it an enterprise fund. And sacrosanct means you can't touch it because it's holy. And we are not ever supposed to touch that money because of the way we organized it with a specific purpose. One of the reasons water rates is so high in DuPage County is because the county commissioner, a couple of years ago, raided the money that Addison Township had built up. You raise that, you raid the water fund, and you are indirectly raising water rates. That's gotta stay sacrosanct.
Yes, Mr. Wilson?
The funding source for the Water and Sewer Capital Projects Fund is the Water and Sewer Operating Fund. All the monies that come in, you're exactly right, it is an enterprise fund. And the funding source for the Water and Sewer Capital Projects Fund is the Water and Sewer Operating Fund. In the, for the audit purposes, they're reported externally exact as one fund. For budgeting purposes, we break them out, but in, in reality, in the outside world, they're one fund. So any money that we would, using your term, raid the water and sewer fund would actually be used 100% appropriately to fix water and sewer infrastructure. So there's no impropriety in using water and sewer fund money to fix water and sewer fund infrastructure.
Except, we said it would be, it would be, as profit is compared, it would be used for capital improvement with the largest items coming first. If we, if we should have to have a $40 million new water treatment plant, the first place to lower the cost of it from the borrowing would come from this fund. So in other words, instead of having profit, as you would have in a private enterprise fund, the money becomes to handle a sinking fund so that when you have a major capital project that has to be replaced because it's outmoded, you've got, you've got your starting money, you've got your seed money. The higher the money, the less you have to borrow. So this money should not be used to repair streets. It should be used for, for a future plant.
Okay, so, so with that being said, I want to keep going. I don't want to debate it yet. That's the funding piece. Let's look at the projects, see what we want to do, and then we'll circle back to figure out how we do it. Okay, can you, can you keep going on the page, on the next page of where you were?
Yeah, so that's the, the high-level review there of the, all the projects rolled into one. If we go into the, the top half of page nine. This is a breakout of the general capital projects fund. The cash flow showing the projected revenue streams and the projected expenses at the next to last line, and then the projected ending cash balance for this particular fund over the next five years. Does carry a positive cash balance projected in each of the five years. So, you know, as long as estimates hold true, you know, we would be fine to do all the projects in there and still have money left over at the end.
Okay.
If we go to the bottom half, the Water and Sewer Capital Projects Fund, this is where you run into the almost $2.4 million deficit in the first year with water and sewer projects. All the projects that are in, in this particular fund and this particular set of line items here are water and sewer projects. There's no street projects, there's no lighting projects, there's no, what, sidewalk projects, no stormwater projects, no anything like that. So all the projects that are in this particular line item that constitute the $2.4 million deficit are water and sewer projects. Like I said, that's a decision that you're gonna have to, to determine, you know, how you want to handle that over the next couple of years, in particular, this, this coming year first. On page 10, there's a transportation summary. You have a summary of each of the five years at the top and the amounts. And this year, we added a breakout of each of the fiscal years and the amounts of the projects so that you can quickly see what you're getting. For example, streets, $2.763 million. Well, what am I getting for $2.7 million? Directly below that, you can see street 1, 1, 4, 5, and 9 are the breakout of that $2.7 million. So it's, it's a little, it's not as summarized, but it's capsulated to a single year so you can get a quicker snapshot instead of having to look through all the pages and trying to add up the numbers, you know, as you're going through.
I like that.
So at this time, you know, I think we probably specifically want to focus on the 2012 projects with questions, obviously, if there's some in the out years we have questions on, we can certainly address those. But as you know, we're only committing ourselves to the first year, which is fiscal 2012. So those are the ones we probably want to spend most of the attention on.
Okay, so is this where you want to look at page 10, 2012, at that list first? Is that right?
Correct. And just, you know, on, of those, I know there are nine projects there. If there's any specific questions on any of those nine projects, we can address those and vet those out at this time.
Okay, but also, where's the 2012 Water Capital Projects list?
That's three sections away.
Okay.
This is only the transportation section. Then the next is building and grounds, then miscellaneous, and then water and sewer. So we take it section by section.
I see, okay.
We're talking about.
I understand.
Like items, if you will, for a period of time.
Right, so on page nine, the Capital Projects Fund section is a roll-up of each of the sections outside of the water sewer capital projects, right? So the General Capital Projects Fund has transportation, it has.
Buildings and grounds.
The section.
And miscellaneous.
Got it, okay.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so with that being said, page 10, projects for fiscal year 2012. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have a question. The last item, the, the school zoning warning lights. Who's requesting it and what is that? I mean, I thought the school always funded it.
It's a system that's antiquated, the controlling of the yellow lights. And Chief Benowitz will explain further.
Okay. It was brought to my attention by Alderman Winger that we were particularly having a problem on Addison Road with the warning light systems. That is actually ours, it is not owned by the county. And we have four locations in town where these are used, Oakbrook School, the junior high, Wooddale and Commercial, and Addison Road for all those school zones. So this is actually just bringing it up to, to modern standards. These things are antiquated, they're not working, they're not sequenced correctly. It's been causing a burden for Public Works to go out there and reprogram these all the time.
Where's there the one on, by the junior high?
There's one up at the junior high for the northbound lanes and the southbound lanes. So is that to replace them or? Replace them all and then put them in with a computer system, which would be slaved and controlled either by us and by the school district. And that would be for a total of eight of them.
Can I do one other question?
Yeah, one more file up, and then I'm gonna call in your brother.
Is there, is there state funding money available for that, knowing that it's a school issue? Did we check into that?
I could not tell you that off the top of my head. We can always look, but like anything else, things are a little bit tight. And I've not seen anything come across with regards to that, but I can always look at it.
Thank you.
Alderman Ray Wesley?
Is this the time that we bring up some projects that are, that we're seeing on page 10?
What we're doing?
Yeah, but let's start on 2012 first.
That's what I meant.
Yep.
I have a question on, for Deer Path Road reconstruction. Are all those houses on Deer Path in the city limits? And if not, why are we reconstructing sections of a street that's not in city limits?
There are, or there are homes on Deer Path that are not within the city limits. The road is ours minus the north section in one spot, which is one area that we've contacted Addison Township about working with us on that. To date, they have not responded to my email, and I have a call in as well to them. So once I find that out, I'll have a better understanding. But when Mr. Graff originally had this designed, we did design the road surface that was owned entirely by the city. I believe there is one small section that is not owned by the city.
How do we get those properties into the city limits of annexing them in? Because I really don't want to sit here and pave a road or reconstruction a road with, with the people that are benefiting that's not paying into the city.
I think unless the mayor wants to speak in, I mean, I think unless they, unless they want to voluntary come in, I think you're right back to the involuntary annexation, that conversation we had a couple of weeks ago.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, rather than go that route, it seems like this would be an ideal joint project between us and the township. And if you need some of us to make the approach over there, I'd be glad to do that. We can do this as a joint project and cost savings for both of us.
Okay, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, I believe the reason why this was put up here to reconstruct and when we did Oak Meadows Drive and we regrind and resurface that, the agreement was, the guy stood here and said, yes, they were budgeting for Deer Path to do that project. Because that was a question that was asked. We have a small portion there, and they said that they would, they will commit to Deer Path reconstruction. The guys stood here and said that to us.
That's right.
I believe that was the debate when we did Oak Meadows Drive. Unless I was at the wrong meeting, but I thought that was a discussion. Am I, Brad, was that the statement that was made?
That's how I remember it as well.
So I say we go back to them, and we say that the agreement was reached when we did Oak Meadows Drive. We paid for Oak Meadows Drive, our portion, which we were fought about, and they said that they would help us pay for this project. So.
Any, any other input on 2012? Alderman, please.
Yeah, I see the alleys are back in here, and we're doing all of them. I thought we were gonna split this up over three years. I know last year, we were told, no, no, we weren't gonna do any. I thought we should have did some last year and some this year. Now we're getting hit with 670.
Mr. Kramer?
I had not remembered the conversation of three years. I remember hearing that we were gonna do the alleys in two years originally. That was back, starting in '08 and '09. I wanted to not let the alleys get lost. I had been questioned by several aldermen between the year that they were done and last year when we did not have any work done. That's why I elected to put them in there. That was my call, and by no means was trying to force it. But people had asked me, how come the alleys are no longer in there? So I put, I put that information back in there. If we wanted to split that up, we certainly can do that.
I believe I was one of the guys that was asking about the alleys last year. If any, anyway, we can, how many alleys are we talking about here? 10? Do five, and then five the following?
I don't believe I put the number when I located it. I think I put the, I did put the linear feet in there. Again, we, I, I'm sure I can break this up into a more manageable amount. Like I said, just let me know the amounts or the years that you would like it done, and we can do that, or we can fit in a reasonable amount in each one.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just a little up to Mr. Kramer's comment. You know, the original conversation I recall from three years ago was to do half and half, which is also why we did the other half for 60% or 55%, whatever the number comes out to. Additionally, from a cash flow standpoint, there's no reason from a cash basis to break this up. It's only if you don't want to tear up the rest of the alleys all in one summer. So it'd just be more of a convenience standpoint. There's no cash flow reason to do that. I don't know if there's some synergies in doing all of it, the bigger contract, maybe get some, some quantity discount. I don't know, I mean, it's obviously your call, but, you know, there's no cash issue. It would just be a convenience issue, I guess.
Are there some alleys that are much worse than others and, and the 670,000?
Yeah.
Mr. Kramer?
They're all equally as bad. They all have their own, their own merits for being bad. I wouldn't say any of them by any means are passable any more than any of the other ones. So I would not want to rank them from lowest to best because I don't think I could get much above, you know, if, if worst was one, I don't think I could get much above a two for most of them, so.
Okay, okay. That satisfies me. Any other questions on any other items? Alderman, please.
Yeah, on page 16 and 17, the resurfacing.
No, I want to stay on 2012.
Yeah, that is.
Oh, like a detailed view of it?
Yeah, street resurfacing, million and three. Well, there's a million and three in 12. My question is, are a lot of, any of these roads coming up for water main replacements? Or any, you know, full reconstructions? Because I know we've been doing, I think, actually Deer Path, we, two years ago, we did a pretty substantial resurfacing, and now we're gonna do a full reconstruction. I just want to make sure we're not throwing away money here.
Alderman Coles?
I'm not knocking.
You had a surface done on your Windsor Street, right? Last year or the year before?
Three years ago.
Deer Path had, all they did was put a blacktop because it was so bad over there. They just stopped the thing because they had extra blacktop. They didn't do a street, a reconstruction. The thing was for curbs, sways, and up to the house of 430 or 431. And then the other part was the county's property. And the county did not want curbs, and so they stopped it. And that was when they came in here and said that they were gonna do Oak Meadows Drive, and they were gonna give us a break on it. And a guy came to my house personally, and because I was against it, or for it, and that was, he said whenever Deer Path, they would take care of it. So they said they would do that. So Roy, talk to your buddy Tom over there.
Rich.
He's the guy that said that they would, they would go along with us when we did Deer Path. So let's get things straight.
I'll give him a quarter of our money.
Yeah.
Alderman, please.
What I was saying is, resurfacing, I know we didn't reconstruct Deer Path.
All they did was put a ten quarter.
Okay, let's let, let's let Alderman please talk.
If any of these streets gotta be torn up again or whatever for water mains or anything? Because, you know, I don't know how these were picked, but I just want to make sure in two years, we're not redoing a full reconstruction on any of these.
Right.
Because we can give it a patch job.
Mr. Kramer?
Of our projects, we look at the surrounding infrastructure in them. So most recently, we've completed or are nearing the completion of our water modeling. One of the issues that Al, Steph, and I from Baxter, Woodman have discussed is once we get that water modeling done, overlaying some maps of the existing streets on the outlying sufficiency studies so you can see that. But yeah, absolutely, we do look at any larger project that we do, how it affects the other areas that are around there. So that has been taken into consideration, and we did. So that has been taken into consideration and we did proof at least these next three years for those projects. As you recall, um, in Ward Two last year, we did some full depth patching on Forest View and there was, um, due to be, uh, a resurfacing of that street in the years to come. So often, you will see some patching work done prior to a reconstruction of a road. That's basically just to allow that pavement to temporarily last until that full reconstruction can take place for the safety of the motoring public.
Alderman Ray Wesley.
I know you want to stay on 2012. When are we get, when are we going to redo this book? I mean, when does it get redone?
I think it's kind of like a living document each year.
What do you mean a living document?
A document, a living document, like each year it gets updated and pushed out one more year.
Well, you can't sit there and say that. We got, well, how long, we got this going out to 2016.
Mm-hmm.
And you know what? I don't see a lot in here for Ward, Ward Two. I see, nothing against Ward One or anything, but when Lane Moyer was up here, a lot of those streets got redone.
You know how long that took?
I, I understand that, but there's wards, there's streets in our area that's falling apart too. And I'm not knocking Ward One, but I'm saying, every alderman sit here, again, again.
Before you say anything, Ward Four had every street, when Mayor Greer was the mayor here, Ward Four had every street rebuilt. Am I right, Mayor?
You're right.
Yeah, had every street rebuilt in Ward Four. So Ward Four had every street done. Now Ward Three has had rebuilding streets, Forest View and stuff like that. Now I've been around a long time, so don't, you, you're just a little, you're only 30-something years here. I've been here 30-something years. Uh, and I've seen more that went on than you get.
I understand.
Okay, wait, okay, okay, we heard this and then hang on. Okay, uh, Mr. Wilson?
I'm right in the way, I'm right in the mood.
Okay, enough.
That's okay.
Deerpath has been six years now that it's supposed to have been done. That was when, when Marshall was here. We had a meeting here six years ago and it still ain't done. So don't, don't start picking on Ward One.
I'm giving Alderman calls a little leeway since he's been out for six months. I'm, I'm getting, get this out of my chest.
I don't need a leeway, I don't need to.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, yeah, let's, I, uh, jump in the middle of this. Um, one of the projects in, in this year's CAP, uh, street project number nine, is a street sufficiency study.
Yes.
As we realize that the one that was done, uh, was it four and a half, five years ago, five years ago, um, is a, kind of near the end of its effective life and there have been some significant events since that one was done, notably, uh, the storm in 2008 and this last year. So we're going to be undertaking another street sufficiency study. So, this, the list on page 17, the only one that's actually really being committed to here is the list in this year, 2012, 2013, 2015, and the yet to be determined 2016 list could look significantly different from this, depending on the results of, uh, that street sufficiency study. So, um, you know, not to get into, to the different wards and stuff, but.
Right.
I mean, this whole thing could be loaded with Ward Two roads after this next study's done and nothing in Ward One. I mean, it, it's, these two out years are there based upon the last study, but they're gonna be revamped based upon the new study.
Right.
Uh, that study's coming up, uh, if approved this fiscal year, so it presumably would be done this summer, I would presume.
I, I can see what you're saying, like really on a street reconstruction, the only real discussion then is for 2012 and it's Deerpath, right? And Stonem, a little bit of Stonem, if I remember correctly? Am I right, Mr. Kramer?
The design of Stonem, correct, would take place this year.
Gotcha, okay. And, and, uh, Deerpath?
Correct, Deerpath Construction. Deerpath has already been designed, it's due for construction this coming May.
Okay. And then, once we do the sufficiency study, we'll circle back and look at the prioritization. Okay, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Keep in mind, when I joined this councilman back several years ago, the reason is why we did the study on the roadway is that we don't have a debate up here with aldermen trying to push for streets in every direction. And that's why we did it. Now, if we aren't going to follow that street study down the line in the next five years that we're going to spend the money to do this street study, then if we aren't going to do that, then we're going to go back to square one again and we're going to keep pushing for this ward gets all their streets done and all that. That was the reason why we voted last time to do a street study. We did it for five years and we told up, we made a commitment to this council when I was here that we would go back and redo another one in five years and see if the streets change. And if that changes, then we revamp all the street reconstruction again. I still say we should stay that path because we're gonna be bickering back and forth, I'm gonna be bickering that I want five more streets in my ward, he's gonna be, we don't want that anymore. And I think we need to get out of that. So continue with the street study in five years. Right now, we only doing 2012 right now. Five years, once that comes back, then we'll revisit all the streets reconstruction again. So stick with the program like we have passed in the past on this council. Council cannot keep changing her mind on street studies.
Alderman, please.
To follow up on the street study, the first one we did, from what I understand, was a little inefficient because it didn't really test the base of the roads. But I believe this one we're doing now is gonna taste, test the base. Is that correct? No, not the first one, not the one we did the last time. They said no.
At this point, um, the, what's budgeted is a, not a detailed, um, soil survey that is not included in, in that cost. Um, that would raise the cost quite a bit. Right now, uh, you know, dealing with a, a lot of pavements, um, there, there's a lot you can tell visually, uh, with a pavement. So, you know, at this point, it was not the direction to go into a, a soil survey and actually taking cores and, and samples out of the, out of the base cores.
Can I follow up?
Follow up, and then I, I do want to get on to other items. Follow up and then I'm gonna call on Alderman calls.
So, basically, we're gonna do same type of thing, it's gonna shoot the light or whatever and check for cracks or whatnot. So, the bottom line is stuff like what was done in Ward Two this past, uh, summer, those big, big resurfacing or big oversized patch jobs, those are gonna pass. Same thing in Royal Oaks, those are gonna pass, but we've been, already been told that the base over there and in Royal Oaks is garbage. So, if you're gonna do the study, I, I think we should do it right.
Mr. Kramer?
We realize that there is a lot of pavement out there that's been repaired. We realize that there is base that is.